Public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with roll call.
Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda? I think we'll motion approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We oppose or stand. Okay, do we have a motion to approve minutes from September 1st, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 1st.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We oppose or stand. Okay, and we have Bill Smith for panel. Have a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, discussion and questions?
Um, is he tires for Sterling number two, is that one of our trucks you bought?
Yep. Yeah, that one there was, they want to make, or they would've made it through the winter, but they don't manage it directly to him, so.
Okay.
And if you notice, there's a, there's a bill from Graham Tire for the tires.
Yeah.
And then there's one from Tannens for the mounting of it.
Oh, okay, I didn't catch that one, but I did find, I seen the one from Graham.
So we get the tires at government break or government discount.
Okay.
It's like state benefits out there, um, instead of, um, Tannens buying them from Graham and then reselling to us.
Yeah.
We just buy them directly through Graham, then drop it off at Tannens, and then we do the mounting for us.
Perfect.
Why don't we do our own mounting?
Do our own what?
Why don't we do our own?
Mounting of tires?
No.
We don't have a tire mounting machine.
You don't use a machine?
I'm not a, I'm not a tire guy. I do small tires.
I'm just curious, because.
You need a tire.
I mean, cage for sure.
Their 22 fives are done by hand all the, and Connor did them by hand at 10.
So.
What'd we spend that time on those?
Six hundred, six oh one.
Sixty dollars a tire.
What's a yard of the?
I don't know. I'm not a tire guy.
I think money will close back.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Randall.
Yes.
All right. Section for public input, are any of the agenda items? Mine, uh, yep.
Uh, Kathleen Putman, uh, co-owner, side line, used to repair, also representing South Bar as bartender. Uh, we have rats in our businesses, um, seven years of being in business at the shop, we've never had rats. I don't know how or what city council can do or, uh, do, um, but I would imagine if two of our businesses down this line have rats, that it, it could become a problem possibly within the homes, and I know what kind of habits they read, so. Uh, I just wanted to let you guys know that we got rats. So whatever could be done, maintenance or potentially addressing it, I don't know if it's an elevator issue, I don't know where the issues come from, but in seven years of business and three years at the South Bar, we've never had this kind of problem before with the size of critters coming in, so. That's all I wanted to talk about.
Will we ask questions? Do we have, usually I have, um, same type of topic. That won't cover the same type of thing? Okay.
Yeah, then I'll go Craig.
Woodchuck.
Craig, if you've got ideas. It's kind of rad, but it's not woodchuck.
Make a good poll, tell how much wood.
Poison, is what I do.
Oh, yes.
I know, I know, have we had that issue in town before?
Now, with like, that type of rat, sewer rats, so you'll see how much come out, you know, when they're big, you know?
Yeah, and these are.
I'd imagine between, uh, the Sonic Lodge, that doesn't have a floor, and it's built on top of a subway or whatever you want to say, and it's got open floor and everything, so I've seen a lot of critters come out of there before, so between that and the elevator, I can see it, so I don't know.
We did have a complaint earlier this year, a resident complained about their neighbor, they saw rats, and so our code enforcer, you know, addressed it with the neighbor, and required to come out, and he hired an exterminator to take care of it, I'm not sure exactly what he did, but I mean, it was this property, it was responsibility, and because he had pictures of them on that property, yeah, so.
Sure.
And there was a lot of places rats could hide and be at, so.
Does the city still have a live trap?
Yeah, we got live traps, I don't know if they've kept a rat, I mean, they're pretty.
Yeah, they're not like.
I was gonna say, that's nice, yeah, cats. A rat might be able to get through all, although that's all.
Yeah, so.
Was, was the complaint earlier this year, did it happen to be down in, kind of that South Main area, with like a wooded lot over that there, way by the river?
I remember it, I think it was on Oaks.
Oh, it was on Oaks, okay, okay.
So, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't by the crit, or whatever you think, you know, they would come, and so what, and would travel down.
I think that was Coons.
I've heard that one.
Yeah, we had, we dealt with Coons before, Possums before, Possums, yeah, we got, we had all kinds of.
And Kathleen, these are rats, not just mine. Yeah, there is, I, I called a cute little mousey when I had my husband come down and dump it, because we were blue trapping them, and he was, that's not a mouse. So, we've got, we've got three, and I, I hate to put this out there publicly, it's embarrassing, we do have pest control coming to the South Bar, so it will be under control. But, um, yeah, they're from nose to butt, I have video of that, we'll see. Because I, they're a candy. Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. Well, you're good to ground on that, too, if there's something else we can do, or reinforcement, here's anything, as far as getting certain properties, if we can figure out, and if you see anything where you know where they're coming from, please, yeah, let us know, if there's something we can do.
At the shop, I mean, we don't have food at the shop, dog food is what we were noticing was missing, um, but we don't have anything that would, would prompt them to come in, it's not cold to prompt them in, like, you know, like mice.
Right.
We've got mice, but only when it's cold.
So, antifreeze? There's your solution, dog food.
But animals love their smell, I don't, we don't use poison, yeah.
There's, Kevin, Connor.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't understand you. Need a public comment.
Um, Sandy Dean, um, here tonight about the downtown Hartford Inc. event for L U increased Oaks, um, 26th, Saturday, same afternoon as the jamboree. He has great, great nephew, um, got the, um, headstone from the Veterans Administration, and it is up as of last weekend, oh, Saturday. Um, we do have everyone on board, um, from the Boy Scouts are gonna put out flags on all the 28 veterans, Civil War veterans in that cemetery. Um, plus Zion Trinity to humble the modest and courageous. We've got the, um, reenactment group, the 13th U S Infantry Company, G A R, coming out to do a memorial service, a traditional memorial service. Pastor Seth is going to do some original music, um, hymns, and, um, to have even a, a prayer from those days, which I must say is actually quite appropriate to this time, it's, it's very interesting. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, Craig was good enough to put up the poster, and I guess it's on the marquee, we just wanted you to know that we're going forward, and I'd sure like to see you there. And if you have any questions about Mr. Oaksville, we will be glad to answer that. And actually, learning as much as I have about him, just in the last couple of months, I think maybe we should consider an Oaksville day? You know, kind of something, just that kind of, yeah, we've had response on Facebook, with people that said, I lived there all my whole life, I never knew.
Right.
So, um, anyway, thank you very much.
I'm glad you're here today.
What time does it start? What time does it start?
Um, it's at one-third, they're gonna put out the flags, the recognition, and that starts at two. Um, between the recognitions and the service, it'll be about forty-five minutes, and then at three o'clock, Bill Hoskins, who's the director of the Manyacum or Civil Heritage Museums, who's also was a commander in that infantry group, but he's part of that, um, he's gonna do a walking tour of like, at, from like, ten of the other, um, of the guys out there. Um, that too, probably won't take more than forty-five minutes, two or an hour, but there's some fascinating stories for the people that think Hartford doesn't have anything interesting, or doesn't have stories. These guys alone are just fascinating, so, thank you.
Thank you, I would say that, yeah, when we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, at Hartford, you know, East End Oaks, and, and then at some point they got renamed Hartford, and the speculation as to why, and probably had something to do with the railroad, and maybe, you know, rename it after Hartford, Massachusetts, and all that, very interesting, actually.
Actually, I think I've solved the issue, the sign outings always bother me, because it always said that it was the first two people on the train, like, if you know anything about history, that's not how it happens. That's fact, well, that track gets laid, many people his name before that first piece of track goes down, and so that didn't make any sense, and then they said, well, it was a whole bunch of people from Hartford were from Hartford, Connecticut, so I'll do my research, of all those Civil War soldiers, not a single one came from Hartford, Connecticut, and they were all our earliest homesteaders. But, there was a railroad article that said Hartford was, it was like, how did the towns get their names? So, it was Hartford was named by Edward Edward Tilton, from whence he immigrated. Keep in mind, this is the railroad that put out that article, and Edward Tilton was nowhere to be found in Oaksville or Hartford or anywhere else. So, you can bet he was the agent for the railroad who got to decide where the track went and what the depot would be called. There was one, one single homesteader, and that was Charles Martin, and that railroad bisects his property down here on the south end, he was from Hartford, Connecticut. And so, yeah, facts speak to the fact that it was those two that decided, oh, we want to do this, and then there's those that say, well, then folks complain. But then, the end of, him and his two brothers were like major developers of this town, hardware stores, later Harvey Bush's influence, the funeral director, it was all of them. And they were part of dividing Dakota Territory into states, and I mean, these guys were just community, and, and Eliot's, um, obituary ends. Mr. Oaks was a man of splendid character, and his upright life, and their fair dealing with others, won him the respect and admiration of those who knew him. So, it was good for the community, Eliot said, no worries, so, there's your history lesson.
And other public comments?
My name is John Fuller, and referring to the history of Hartford, South Dakota, my great-grandfather, Henry C. Always, spelled A U L W E S, was first name representative of Hartford in 1896, and, uh, he was running for governor, did five miles off the town, on Wall Lake Road, grabbed that that time. And he came into Hartford to get the load of shingles and lumber, and heading south back to the homestead, stopped some of the shingles and lumber, and shipped it a little bit, so he got off to rearrange it, and, uh, the horses geared up and the shingles and everything came off, and killed it, fifty-two years of age. And, uh, that was my great-grandfather, and he's memorialized on the bronze plaque on the corner, to the, down the west side, and, uh, I am always sad, because I could've been a blue blood, I could've been the great grandson of the governor of South Dakota, maybe, but, uh, I just wanted to mention that, and, uh, I drive school bus from West Central. Lived here, uh, all my life, my mother born and raised here, eighty-nine years, um, and, uh, just, just wanted to mention that to you, that the, uh, the Oaksville, too, is, is an interesting story, too, so, I'd say people can tell you about that, so, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I'll just get more and more interesting.
I go dancing with John's brother, Jim.
Eighty-six years old, still going.
Dolores Fuller, who is Kelly, which is where Kelly points.
Kelly Point, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Give that, just seen him last night. You don't know what you're gonna find out.
If we ever run across any great money for an historical, you know, historical center or something like that, it'd be a nice touchdown, actually, or something, you know, just to keep your mind and think of that, or something. All right, any others on the calendar? Okay. Down that patient, we got special debt application for the 2020 homecoming parade, and.
Good evening, um, so yes, the application, just got that in, because in the spring, we really tend to be back at school. So, our plan is to have homecoming next week, uh, we were trying to do all the events as possible, and so one of those, right now, as long as all things stay fine, is the parade, um, as usual, coming out of the middle school, middle school parking lot. The one change on that, that I was gonna ask the kids about, is, you know how typically the come from the middle school parking lot, head west on Second and then south on Main, we would like to go north on Main? Because, um, trying to spread the kids out, and so basically Humboldt Elementary would, um, when the buses come, I talked to Rick Coker, and more than likely try to park on that, that street right south to South Bar there. The buses park there, and then Humboldt Elementary could use mainly basically spread out, so then, from middle school to Hartford Elementary, that would be more middle school, high school, and Hartford Elementary kids, so going north than Main allows to help it to spread out more. So, and then end at Highway 38, and that would be the end of it, so, that is what we were asking if we could do.
Well, at least it's not because of the rats.
Right, well, that might be another thing, but I'm just saying, that'd affect the kids out.
Didn't see that coming. I make a motion to approve the application for the West Central High School Homecoming Parade, and wave the fee.
Second.
Motion is second, everybody okay with the change of the route?
And route as, maybe as mentioned.
Sounds good, still good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or staying? Great, fun to visit, great.
Thanks for doing that.
All right, we have someone from here, first reading, ordinance 697, just to rezone lots seven and eight, block four, Hartford City proper. This is right down.
So, so these are, these city lots downtown, um, the southeast corner of First and Main here, that, uh, here's purchased from the, uh, elevator. Um, we have, you know, more or less than those two north ones, but the two north ones are zoned, um, right now, community commercial, and then the rest of them are central business. These two blocks are all zoned central business, so it makes sense, and it, and I think it was zoned community commercial, because you guys know there's a car lot, those two lots, so that's probably why I got rezoned that way. But, as the, um, Gaven, H D F R, you know, trying to find, you know, market that for economic development, it would make sense to have them all zoned as one, so whether they have first, one, two, three, or all the lots, it's all just one zoning, they don't have to, you know, contend with rezoning it, so, we'd like to rezone the two north lots, that are community commercial as central business, as all the other lots are, so that's what this first reading would do.
Do we have any motions on the first reading? Make them approved. Second, discussion. Vote, Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Randall?
Yep.
We have someone in here, just first reading, ordinance 694, which is the end of zoning regulations.
So, this ordinance, um, it was first brought up and discussed with the planning and zoning board, um, we actually had a resident who, um, is pastor church here, and he doesn't particularly have a church. They don't have a building to worship in, so their congregation has been worshiping right now in the upstairs of the Pizza Ranch building. They're looking for other place to, to move it to, they're kind of outgrowing that facility, and they're not quite ready, don't have the funds to build their own building, um, so they come to me to ask where the different places churches could be at, well, our zoning regulations, as are written now, really just says a church, and they kind of define that as a building, you know, not so much as organizing the religious events, um, and you're only allowed to do that in residential sections, actually, residential and mobile home parks, but no other areas is that permitted, so. Um, after the planning and zoning board talked about it, um, it was decided that really there's, we don't want to have that one, but we have in the past, and we have now, just other religious organizations that are gathering, not particularly in a church, but at other places. And we decided, um, maybe we need to change our definition of church, and change that to places of worship, which basically means any place where a group organizes for religious activities, and basically allow it as a permitted use in any district. Um, they didn't see any issues with, you know, if, if you as a church or congregation want to gather in the industrial park, if you can get space there in a sudden day from Gillespie, and he allows it, we didn't see there'd be any issue or problem with that, as long as, you know, they don't have to rent the building, or, you know, have permission from the order, so, the planning and zoning board, um, this, basically, this ordinance is changing our zoning regulations to, um, take out the wording of church anywhere, replace it with places of worship, which means it could be just any organized religious activity, doesn't have to be a specific, a building just for that, and allow it as a permitted use in every district.
The, but not, uh, the, so the catch-all is the, but are not limited to section of the definition, in my opinion, places of worship include.
Oh, yeah.
It rattles off the same things that are.
Right, I mean, any kind of ceremonial, yes, exactly, it, like I said, it doesn't, doesn't limit it to a church building, yeah.
Temporary Bible?
Right. Sunday school camp, whatever, you know, whatever, you know.
On par with neighboring communities, is the definition of zoning.
Oh, yes, yep, yep, C K, I said, um, they actually wrote this for me, I didn't know what other communities do, and I told them what we want to do, and, um, they took from, yeah.
Motion to approve ordinance number 694, ask for a call.
Second.
Discussion. Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes.
We have someone in here, annexation of lot three, this one's addition. Two pieces underneath that, we have resolution 2020 dash thirteen, annexation of lot three, this one's addition, and we also have first reading of ordinance 696, which is zoning of lot three, and this one's addition, so, two separate pieces that are in that.
Yeah, this comes about in our previous conversations of, yeah, lot three is that five acres that we have, or these are central states, and how presently it's not in city limits, yeah, and we did that because there's two housing eligibilities on it. Um, we discussed foregoing those and getting the property annexed and zoned, so once again, it could be easier to market to any prospective business coming in, that, that part of the puzzle done, you know, it's more attractive to somebody wanting to purchase it, so. To annex it, we need pass the resolution to approve the annexation, and then rezoning takes the passage of an ordinance, so that's what's broken down into the two different categories. And proposing just to rezone it, or to zone it, it's not even zoned yet for city, to zone it as light industrial, just as the surrounding, um, property that we have up there in city limits.
So, this answers the opportunity for the, for the eligibility, correct?
It would, if you annex it, and the, how the eligibilities would go away.
I got a phone call about those, but when I visited at the council, there was no appetite for proceeding down that road, so, there's somebody here, obviously, concerned about it, so. Motion to approve resolution of annexation 2020 dash three, I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Okay, and we've got first reading of ordinance 696, which is the zoning of lot three.
Just a clarification on our minutes, I'm sorry, on the agenda, this is a typo, resolution 2020 dash thirteen, as it shows up on the minute, on the agenda.
And on your deal, it's three, 2020 dash three.
It should be thirteen, because we're into thirteen.
Oh, it is thirteen.
I'll correct that before we have it signed. It is 2020 thirteen.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve ordinance, first reading of ordinance 696.
I'll second. Discussion. All right, vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Randall?
Yes.
All right, and others only, so we have second reading, ordinance 692, which is rezone lots five and six, block two of the western, that was, we, no changes from this first?
No change, no, no, yeah.
We're gonna approve ordinance 692. Motion from Brennaman to approve, 692.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Discussion. All right, we'll vote. Brennaman?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And then we got second reading, ordinance 693, which is the 2021 appropriation ordinance, and our budgeting, no change.
I make a motion to approve, second reading of ordinance 693.
Second.
All right, discussion. Okay, we'll vote. Jones?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
And Randall?
Yes.
All right. All right, I'm gonna jump on the agenda here in just a minute, in case you have other things going on, sorry. Do you have any requests, you have to do, just feel last meeting?
Sure.
This one's to release five dollar corporations for the 2020 budget, so, any changes from two weeks ago?
Not really, no. We're still moving forward.
We're still moving forward, everything's going well. We are not having a senior's choice for the car show, 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 and shine, just because with COVID and everything, we don't know that we necessarily, and I know the senior citizen center is kind of a little cautious right now, because they've had a couple of positive cases, so not gonna go to that extent right now. But we are still doing, we're still looking for you guys doing the vote. We have tickets made up, so just come and see one of us at Shelter One, and then just turn around for yours, but hopefully some other holdout, it would be a good night. The only thing that we had mentioned, we were at last name, is there a way with a deputy that we would be able to have funds safely put inside here? Obviously, we wouldn't come in here without a deputy, and it would be in the deputies, and then like Monday, we come in here to count the funds, instead of having funds just kind of out and gone. We don't want those cash, just, I mean, it could be potentially a lot more, that makes it a little bit more secure.
Is there any, anybody have an issue with that? Because I should work okay, as long as you work that out with the deputy?
Yeah, I think they're, they're, but I just wanted to run it past you, because we don't want, obviously, nobody's coming in here on there, or we'd be probably myself, one other jamboree committee, and then the deputy, so.
All right.
I'm just wondering why you're not at the bank?
This year, we do not have bank employees that are able to attend the event like we have in the past. In the past, we have used the bank downtown, because we have two employees that work there. One of them is out of town, and one of them is busy down here as well, so. Both of my employees are not available this year, so I don't think the bank's gonna just let me really, really go in there and say, please.
They don't have like a drop box?
Um, I'm not sure if they do, but we don't bank there.
No, I don't, I'm so, I'm, I did, I was like, logistically, I'm like, I could give him my account.
And then for counting, we just figured that myself and like I, I'll leave it on to other people who come in and just use the, the room over here, and I was gonna bring this money counter, because it's a part of the money.
Oh, it's true, I does have a money counter.
It does. Not a laundry or a counter.
All right, do you have any motions?
Motion to approve the release of funds as appropriated for Amber event.
Second. Discussion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Do I just come in and get the, you?
She'll go, yeah.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thanks, guys.
Thanks, I love you all.
All right. Chief, we'll move on to the fire department report.
The Lucian Fire Chief. I don't wanna go on that one. I just didn't know what night appropriations I was.
Yeah, you picked it right, two years in a row.
Well, I showed up Monday night to find the place empty, so I had a wrong idea. So then I had to make other arrangements.
Only guy we seen last they knew was Brenman.
Wow. Well, as long as you're not seeing me at your home replacement business, that's all that matters, yeah. Well, good evening, mayor, councillors, a quick recap from August, again, another busy month, didn't seem like it, I don't know if the uptick in call volume is getting to be the norm, but had forty-two calls, didn't feel like forty-two, but it was, fourteen of them in Hartford here. Training side EMS, we trained on neonatal resuscitation, basic delivery and management of a neonate, and after-delivery care, so. One thing I haven't done in my career is deliver a baby, so.
Now you will.
Yeah, not even close, yeah, so. Fire side, they trained on mapping and skill stations, again, a critical part of our response, especially our newer members, you know, when we get a dispatch, to know where you're going, and what the best route is to get there, and how to get there safely, so. Public Safety Day went very well, I just appreciate all the other entities that were involved with it, made it a big success for the community, so thank all the entities for their support also. With that, I'm open for questions.
The Knox finances, they have to go direct to that company?
They order them direct from Knox, they're specified within Knox, what they have the ability to order. That way, the city's not in the sales business, our, our fire's not in the sales business, they order them direct. When they do order them, though, we do get a notification saying, here's who purchased them, here's the address they're to be installed. Once they have them, once they have them mounted and ready to lock keys, codes, whatever it is into them, they have to contact a member of the fire department to actually go to that location, meet the owner representative there, they place the keys in it, we lock it, and so secure it at that point, so.
Have we installed any, or?
We have not installed any, as of yet.
We have a letter ready to go, and a list, and Ryan's just reviewing that list for us, and once we get that back, we'll send letters out to those that are required.
We wanted to make sure per ordinance, ordinance of certain structures that are required, we have others that have given us keys and codes in the past, that we're gonna be, we are going to them and saying, we're not gonna be your key holder anymore, here's your option for that, it's a more secure way, plus, you don't have to worry about, hey, is this key in this truck? But that's not the truck that went to this call, this way, we have four trucks, each have key holders in, whether it's a fire, rescue, or EMS call, we'll have access to it. Tracking system is in place, the way the tracking system works, everyone remembers has a, their own four-digit code to even get the key out of the key holder. The electronic system will upload into a tracking software every time a key is taken out of the box, every box that it accesses, every time we open a box, it will download data from the box, when it's been accessed, and by what key, and who had held the key at that point in time. The one advantage to the electronic keys, we opted to go with, the old style, the regular mechanical key, if it got lost out there, it's still good. Our electronic keys, if they're out of the key holder, I think it's a matter of two hours, their charge is gone, and they're useless. So, we opted to spend a little more money upfront to have a better security and tracking system for it. Hope that answers your question, Mark?
Yeah, quite a bit, I'm, I'm just looking forward to being on your end, it's good for the community, and then I suppose if they're not in the ordinance, they could still opt to do it.
Right, it's strictly voluntary from there, anybody wants to do, I got several businesses, entities that don't wanna give us codes, we'd rather have you code to get in, than have you break through a door to get in, and we have to replace a door for an alarm.
That's a good edge, I don't think anybody, anybody, none of the neighboring communities have anybody at this point.
No, it's a fairly new technology, it's been out a lot of years, and talking with the Knox representative, you got, some entities are starting to change over to it, getting their new installs to do that, but they're having the inventory both the old and the new, so. In a way, we're a little behind getting it going in Hartford, but in a way, it allowed us to have this right at the beginning, so.
And what is it, Knox?
Knox, K N O X, is the company that administers it, and they're a national company that does this. Something for day-to-market to businesses, hey, we've got this.
I'm also wondering if it can qualify for COVID funds, since it decreases the interaction between them and the people.
My luck.
You never know.
All right. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, guys, thank you for your support, you have, thanks to you.
All right. John?
Hi, guys. I'm here for Mitch, he's, his family's been battling the COVID thing, so he didn't wanna come over, and he hasn't, he's tested negative, and he went and got tested again on Monday yesterday, and so he's just waiting results of that, but he feels like he's negative, but.
He didn't wanna come and spread the word.
Craig asked me to give a long speech tonight, but I'm gonna keep it short.
I heard a bug.
The, well, first of all, Ninth Street, you know, wrapping up, we've got, the asphalt is completed, the concrete work ahead and curb is, is finishing up, they've got fine grading topsoil to do back there. They've got to seed that, and fertilized mulch it this week, the completion date yet is this week on that project, so that's wrapping up nicely within the schedule. From a budget standpoint, we're, we're tracking really close to where we're estimating, maybe a little bit high on that one, but because of some unstable conditions that we have out there. The Ruin Noble project, working on that one, that's about two weeks behind schedule. That has been the reason that was behind schedule, we had some utility conflicts out there, but that project is moving forward, we did have some, a little bit of overruns on that one as well, to work on some utility, basically work on utilities, making sure we had deep enough frost protection under some of that, so those, from a quantity and cost standpoint on Ruin Noble, we may be a little bit overbuckled on that one, so, but not as much as Mitch was thinking evidently last time, he mentioned that he had his last meeting, wouldn't be hearing what he was talking at that point. So, it's tracking a little better than what he originally thought, but in good shape, so. And that project should wrap up this week as well, so both those projects should wrap up this week. As far as warranty items, I just wrote through the, put some other projects.
We're gonna talk about that here in a minute.
Good. We got some sidewalks that had to get removed and replaced, and we have some, I guess, barricades that got put up late, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, but on Van Mark, same thing has happened, we removed the repair item, basically the warranty items, they've been removed now, and they're going back in tomorrow, both projects, it sounds like the concrete workers are gonna go back in, or start tomorrow. And then, we should be wrapping up any reseeding and topsoil work that they have left on those projects this week, so that's a good sign, and the overseeding that was needed along the golf course, Travis, those items have been, are being addressed this week now, so we should be in good shape with the overseeding and the repairs of those sidewalks. As far as the other projects we got going on right now, the industrial park standard here, sewer extension, we're still, I guess, on hold on that, there's, we're not, we're waiting to bid it, the attorneys are working through the easement agreement on the last easement document, so we're still waiting on that, if we, you know, if the attorneys or trees that need anything, we're here to support, so. But that, I think that pretty much wraps up all the items, we did have the sewer and water rates, we're holding off on that until we know where the wastewater treatment project costs are gonna come in, and then we can finalize the sewer line rates as well, you know, with you guys, capital projects and sewer line rates, so we'll wait with that until we've, we've, you've got a firm on board to do the design of that, because that'd be important to make sure we're working with that person, that firm, whoever that is, to make sure we're using the right dollar amount in there for the cost of our water and sewer. So, with that, I'm sure...
Well, here's the, here's the deal, we knew that they were gonna do the inspection, and I seen like Sunday or sometime that they painted, spray painted some of mine in several sections of the sidewalk, and then with no other notice, today they're down there ripping stuff up. I mean, I don't know who, because I had a, Jeremy had one, and I had one, kind of an angry homeowner that's like, what the hell? You know, we get no notice, and here they are tearing up our sidewalk.
Yeah.
When they had been told, this, the one that said, to know to me, well, there's nothing on with your sidewalk, and then they're out there, it's daycare, and that, and nobody says anything to them.
I can follow.
So, who is supposed to, so I guess what I asked, who, who tells us, how, how do we find that out? I called Craig, and I said, Craig, did you know these guys were coming, and he said, no.
No, I got emails more too, and she said, yeah, they're out, well, she said, they're out, there's, there's somebody out there doing work, in her property, she said, which wasn't, it was, ended up the boulevard, and I says, well, I'm not sure what that'd be, so I called Craig, and he went up there, and then right away, ended up it's the sidewalks, but, no, we didn't get no notification from him.
The warranty inspection went out, I'm sure it went out a while ago, maybe one or so ago.
Maybe, and they just, I mean, they had only painted them just in the last few days.
Yeah.
And so I expected, like typical, that it was gonna be a month before we seen anybody. You know?
And, no, but I think you have a point, because the homeowners, their concern is, is, geez, I didn't know somebody's gonna tear my, they paid for it, you know, they paid the apartment, so they're, they're saying, somebody's tearing up my sidewalk, what the heck, you know, I didn't, I sprinkled this one down in there, should I shut them off, if they're on right now, what do I do? If I had a daycare in that backyard, what do I do, if I had an underground dog fence, what do I do? Like, they, they need it now, I think.
Well...
We need to figure out a process to make sure the homeowners know, or when stuff like that's going on.
And I don't know what the locate laws are on this, but I asked the guys, I went out, I said, I said, well, I was kinda surprised, I didn't see any locates, oh, we located this when we put this in a couple of years ago, and I'm thinking, okay, I don't know if two years is statute limitations on locates?
From a locate sample, I know, they're, any time, they're supposed to call for locating.
Guess what, they did not.
Yeah, and but, I mean...
They're ridiculous, dude.
Yeah, you know...
I get that, but still...
And if they are, if they do damage something, you know, they're responsible for it too. I could follow up and see, you know, what happened, you know, obviously, we probably should've notified everybody that there's warranty inspection work gonna go on out there, but, you know, this is, you know, the warranty inspection.
I get it.
Yeah.
And I'm glad that they're fit, I'm not, you know...
So, would it, maybe it should be a warranty inspection, and then there should be a warranty correction. Notice of correction, maybe, hey, we found this upon inspection, this is our estimated fix-it window.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we got that report, we got, the report we got was, they're gonna do an inspection. We didn't hear, this is what they found wrong, or this is what they're gonna fix, or this is what the outcome. What we got was, here they come, and they start ripping stuff up.
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, I guess, okay, you know, notify, I, I, we certainly can notify you when a contractor's coming out to do repairs and warranty inspection, or warranty work. I'm not sure what happened in the past, I'll certainly carry it back and talk to Mitch about it, but, at the same time, we do, you know, in our contract, do a warranty inspection, we send that letter out to the contractor, ensure we've gotten it here at city hall. You may have had a report on it in the past, I don't know, but I'll check on that too, that we were gonna do a warranty inspection, a warranty inspection, we go out and we check if there's any deficiencies, we notify the contractor of that, and they usually have a month or five weeks to get those completed. Now, should've we told you that, probably, I mean, you need to know all those same details, you know, I think, I think we're, you know, we certainly wanna make sure we're, you know, in this case, you know, with the amount of sidewalk that probably been moved out there, I drove through there, there's a fair amount of, we probably should've notified people that we did that.
Yeah.
You know, I'll take full responsibility for that. But my point is, we still have, you know, contractor has a responsibility to get his job done.
Right.
We have a responsibility to do our work, which is notify the contractor and notify you, and I'm assuming we've sent a letter to, to the contractor, copy city, and I'm not sure, but I think the Mickelson Road item was on the, I'll look at our progress report a month ago and see what our...
I know Mitch told us they were gonna do an inspection.
And that inspection resulted in what needed to be repaired, and so that was when we knew also what needed to be repaired, so that time, at that point, between then and now, we probably should've known a lot of you guys, that there's gonna be some disruption out there.
Because street work, a little different than sidewalk, I think that's the deal, because these people paid for the sidewalks, you know what I mean?
They paid for the street too.
I know, but they, they had to come in here, a lot of that was escrow money, they had to come in here and write a check and hand it, so it's a little different deal, and the one lady hadn't paid her... And the one lady hadn't paid her, I haven't paid for my first round yet, and they're tearing it up, you know.
Well, and I think the other side is, is that when you're talking about a sidewalk, you've got sprinkler systems, you've got dog fence. And I know that they're responsible for fixing it, but a fixed thing is never as good as the original. And so I think that's the other side of it.
That's the second or third time that's been brought up. Why, why is it the expectation that sprinklers and dog fences are in the city right away?
It's not. They've done on both sides.
Dog fence is what.
They were digging on my side too.
For the sidewalk?
Yes, sir.
The sidewalk is all.
That's a good idea, boy.
The sidewalk is, actually, that's a wide boulevard up in here, so it is completely on the city boulevard.
Yeah.
Um, I think what we need to do in the, in the future here is, once they get their punch list or the warranty stuff, if it is a sidewalk issue, or something that's gonna affect the media homeowner, we give them a letter and say, this is gonna happen. We're not sure if it's gonna be tomorrow.
Right.
Or five weeks from now, because Mitch didn't know what it was, cause I actually called Mitch yesterday to ask him if he was ever coming in. He didn't have any idea, and he said, we don't usually find out. And I think maybe in the future, we can send a letter, when we send the warranty stuff back to the contractor, we can tell them that we need to have twenty-four hours so we can have somebody there to be there inside. You know, try to tell you guys right now, that won't happen. Yeah, I don't, cause that, they come in and just.
Why won't it happen?
Cause we won't get, we won't get notification. We will if we start finding out, and we're ready to get the contract. All right, we don't.
No, I wanna, I wanna finish, John, cause we've had this argument about people showing up on a weekend, not notifying you, and they're gonna dig stuff up, and it doesn't get done right.
Okay.
Sidewalks could be the same thing. They could come in here and just do it, and call it good, or whatever it is. But if they have to notify the city or the engineer, and if they don't, and they're subject to a fine, and that's in the contract documents, they sign, I think it'll get their attention.
We don't have that in our contract.
Yeah, well, the first time you give a five thousand dollar fine, they won't forget.
To, to your point, John, you mentioned, you mentioned all the communication that's been done with this warranty inspection. But what wasn't done, to Craig's point, is the adjacent property owners don't realize that that inspection's gonna result in removals, replacements, destructions of their boulevard. I guess that's the.
That's what you're saying, that's where you're getting at, is you want us to make sure we're notifying people.
Those folks are, they're blind.
When the warranty comes out, when the warranty inspection comes out, we should be notified. The property owners, when they're, they're gonna be out there doing repairs.
It'd be nice, it's pretty hard as a city councilman to write an email back to one of my constituents and say, shit, I didn't know neither.
I just, we don't have it in our contract right now, and I know that isn't in any contracts right now that, that are in our industry to do that, to issue a thousand dollar grant. We certainly can do that. And we'll add it to the language, we'll have to say it did issue it, and just make sure that it's, it's.
It seems to be an issue for us. That's my concern. Craig didn't even know that they were taking out sidewalks on Van Mark. When I go by and there's no block, no road sidewalks, I thought, this seems odd to me, so I just thought, find out. Now, answer to this, I don't know much about asphalt paving, but is that something you should do in the rain?
No.
Okay. It rains Saturday, and they're paving Ninth Street. Did you know they're here Saturday?
Yeah, I did.
Good. The, uh.
Separate, separate issue, but that's.
So back to what I was thinking, if we didn't read up on John, the, uh.
I ain't know Mitch goes here. Somebody, uh, somebody, somebody rolled in, uh, and must have filled some low spots along Van Mark Boulevard between the sidewalk and curb, great. And then as I walk in my dog, I'm thinking, my, looks like they ran down some construction site, filled their bucket with whatever debris was laying around, and decided to fill it in here, cause there's, there's rock, there's, it's clay, it's clumped up, it's red rock, it's, it's junk, it's trash, and there, but hey, smoothed out that little spot.
Is that the one in your yard?
Well, there's some there, it's on the golf course, it's.
They had, yeah.
It's been some Mid-American, it's a decent Mid-Americans property. That's where I really noticed like, if I had that rock in my yard, I'd probably throw it through the contractor's window.
Sounds like we need to get in construction.
Well, it just seems, it seems to be just a lack of care, and I get it. I see it in my industry, see it in my employees at times. But beat them over the head enough, either they quit, or they get it right.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my point.
Not your fault?
No.
John?
Not your fault, and you have to take, somebody's gotta.
There's definitely a different.
Well, when the guy gave you the answer about the locates, I thought, huh. I mean, I get it, that you're only digging in this much.
No, it's a crazy point, you're not, you're probably mistakes too.
And that's, that's what I told Art, and I said, well, I should know two days advance, I'll get, I'll see locate come through and make sure.
That's what, yeah, that's what Kurt told me.
That's what we get the help of.
There you go.
And there wasn't nothing coming through.
And when the guy said, ah, we located this when we poured this, I think it's two years, right? I think that sidewalk, I think they're two years.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that, that contractor on Mickelson Road, he was, he actually offered to give a credit to I, and on some of that sidewalk, so he didn't have to do it.
Oh, right, he didn't wanna fix it.
Right, and we just said, no, it's not, it's not an option, because you residents all pay for that. And if it's not acceptable, it's just not acceptable. So we chose not to do that, and as it turns out, maybe it would have been better. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Poor John.
Poor John.
Craig?
Okay. Touch up on streets on that open, uh, Ruin project up there. I did get Mitch out with his COVID case and everything else on Friday, cause I noticed it milled up there, so we went up there, we did physically inspect it, walked it all, really good, that bottom lip, so. Um, they didn't get, they had a little bit that they had scraped up yet, and I went up there on Monday, and they had that cleaned up too, to get rid of that complete top lift on that project, so should be in good shape up there. Um, couple other things on our report, I'm just gonna, parks, um, Turtle Creek Park, I don't know if it was intentionally or accidentally, but the circle slide we have down there, uh, the bottom two, uh, panels got busted. It looks like somebody might have bounced on the outside, maybe a little heavier person, um, double, who knows? Um, but they broke them. Uh, we taped it off yesterday, and we ended up having to remove it today. Um, there's no replacement panels available for it, so I got ahold of Blue Tykes, or not Blue Tykes, but, um, Game Time directly. They had a part number, but it was red, which means it is obsolete, so we had to pull it out. I did get some prices for everyone, we're, we'd like just kinda hold back maybe and see what, uh, when we get the new equipment, used refurbished equipment back in, and we'll see how much room we have down here, if we decide to put a freestanding slide back in there, so. So if anybody asks why that is missing, it got busted and obsolete, so we're gonna take it out. Um, the only other thing I'd like to touch on a little bit, is I know last meeting we were talking about Boulevard trees and the sports complex. Um, I do have money available this year if we wanted to, uh, give a gesture, to give a dollar payment on them trees, so the sports complex, along with what the, um, the Live Bank's gonna do. I'd just like to give her some type of answer and say, yeah, this is what we're doing, we got it planned, and if that, that wins you with Live Bank. I did talk to Mike, he can get them ordered yet, um, but I just kinda wonder how you felt about that? If we put some of her money down this year for the trees, and then have her Boulevard money available next year for the homeowners, you know, so. Just wanna see what it would be felt to that.
We have at least enough budget money to, like Craig said, put a down payment or paper half it, and then next year, we use part of the Boulevard or some of our, the park funds for the other portion of it, so.
Is there savings to do in that?
No, but just the, out of this budget, next year's budget, we take it out of next year's budget out of Boulevard trees and cut back, um, a half of them or a third of them, or do we take it out of this year's budget and have it?
Trying to hear a discussion from the last meeting, it seemed like we're.
We're kinda talking, talking about eliminating some of the Boulevard trees and using that money out for parks. But I always do have a little bit of money set aside for replacement trees in parks and putting trees back in. Um, and this year, we do have a little bit of extra money, um.
That's the money you proposed at the, yeah, I, I support that.
I think you do too. Yep, sometimes we're putting them in areas where we have to move them out again or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, we got a spot already, named Mike, we actually out there once we heard about this and stepped in. Looked at whether we put two rows in or just one row in, you know, and something like that. Thought about the different types of trees and stuff, so that's your, like, plan.
That one, well, it's still like Craig said, give them an answer, go forward with the grant, or rather than put them on hold and maybe they got it for us next year, maybe they don't, you know.
Okay. Yeah.
Now, if I would approach them, I could just say, we put our, we're, we are moving forward this, we put our money down on it, um, and that way they could move ahead, and they know that we're locked in.
Anything else? Can I pose that?
That's all I really have in my report, unless somebody has something for me.
Do we have a data line back here? Do we have a data chart?
It's always been there. We got it corrected, cause it was labeled on, we, so with the new phones coming in, we have our phone here for our conference, and we're plugging into the internet, nothing was registering. Uh, it ended up, we had to have Golden West come check, we had about one, four jacks that were mislabeled, so they were plugged into the wrong spots in there, so. So, yeah, we had to figure out, that was, yeah, we had four jacks that we thought weren't working well. Plugged in the wrong because they were labeled wrong, so we had, we got all of them checked, everything's up and working on. They just did that today.
Cause of my high attention to detail, they did put those labels back in the thing that slept on the way on the floor.
Oh, did, oh, okay.
We won't know what it is next time either, potentially.
Oh, no, 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 okay, yeah, yeah, just today, babe.
Oh, I got it.
All right, he's dropping. Anything else for Craig?
I have a move to Karen's report.
Nothing to add, unless you have questions.
Question? Nope. I have a move to Tracy's report. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, John. Teresa.
So as Travis pointed out, we're working on the, our new phone system up and going. We had a little trouble with the internet, they're all up and going. Uh, we thought they would be live tomorrow. Um, Verizon, from what I understand, is having a little trouble with Golden West, something was releasing the numbers, so, uh, they're still working on that, I, so I'm not sure exactly when we'll call, like, he says, they'll get it all straightened out, but we're still.
Is that what they're telling you?
Huh?
Is that what they're telling you?
That's what they're telling us. I don't really know what the situation is. They are still working with Golden West too.
Interesting. I, I've ordered, I've ordered a number for Golden West.
Yeah, so, and that was a week ago, they, and they said, well, we'll let you know for sure if we'll go live or not. And then we did a little bit of training as far as setting up the phones on Monday, and he said, well, I, we're scheduled for Wednesday to go live tomorrow, he said, but I haven't heard that that's a go yet, and I never heard anything today. He said, I'll let you know for sure, so.
So we're going with Verizon?
Well, Verizon is the carrier, it's all, it's, it's called, it's a one-talk system, it's Master Plan is actually the carrier, or the company.
So we're not, we're not running any data through that?
No, no.
It's just voice?
Yes, yes. They, their partner, I guess, is Verizon, but Master Plan is the company that the phone system is for.
We're using Golden West.
So we will use Golden West?
For the phone.
Ex, yeah, yeah, exactly.
But, but voiceover, the system is coming through this company, which.
Right.
Is a reseller, partner with Verizon.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So, um, my Van Mark's, um, that's kind of John alluded to, um, Mitch, Tom, and myself met with Bill Hogan and his attorney and engineer as far as trying to hammer out the easements that we need for the sewer going up there. Um, kind of talked about his request of what he wants. Um, I'd like to go into executive with legal, kinda go a little more detail with the council as far as what he's requesting and to see if we're on board with that or not. That's all, it's kind of to get a little more detail then. And, uh, tomorrow we have an insurance audit scheduled, so, uh, we'll have a bunch of people here with our insurance company, they kinda go through our paperwork or contracts, and they kinda look over all our buildings and our, um, city ground. Good thing they removed the slide, because we would have got big on that, that's unsafe, so, um, that's kind of, you know, their process there, so. That's about all I have for right now.
Speaking of insurance, do we ever got that around, or do we?
We haven't for a few years. Probably the last time we did, it was probably, I'll say six years ago was the last time we. Um, and at that time, the municipal league was the cheapest for the dollars. Um, we certainly can put it out for. I mean, we don't have anything in policy that we do it every so often or whatnot, but it, it's been a while. It's been, I would say it's probably six years that we've done that, so we've been with.
How much does the budget grow in six years? Our city, I mean, how much does it fill our budget for? It's like, the city's grown substantial, you know, in six years and stuff.
Right.
That may still be our best approach, but as a business owner, typically, I'd agree with that. People want me to interview it every year, at minimum, every two years.
And that's something I'd certainly look at and do.
Let's see what happens.
If he has this one, yeah, I'll start trying to contact companies again and try to get us some information through it, so.
Everything else?
Okay.
Any questions? Perfect, thank you. All right, we got old business taken care of, we're gonna jump to new business. We got a review plan for track one and track two of Anderson's.
Um, this was submitted, this plot was submitted to the city, and it was reviewed by planning zoning. Um, it's Darren and Kim Anderson, he's down here, they're not in city limits, but they're in our platting jurisdiction, so they need to come through the city. Um, our engineers reviewed it, um, as you know, since they're correspondents, there were a couple of things they needed to do, um, submit a plan with building on it, showing designated where those were, and then widen the right of way, and then, of course, submit a annexation agreement, pre-annexation agreement with the city. Um, as of today, this afternoon, the surveyor for them did submit, um, number one, the, the plan with the buildings on it, and number three, um, the new plot with the right of way, the correct right of way designated. So Mitch has reviewed that and okayed that. The one piece that we do not have is an annexation agreement from them. That was sent to them a, a week ago. Um, I asked their surveyor, he's heard back from them. Um, he says they sent it out to the Andersons, and they've not received anything back. So this run through planning and zoning last week, they approved a contingent that, um, the engineer comments would be addressed. Um, so we can either hold on it till we get that annexation agreement, or we can pass a contingent that they submit an annexation agreement, and we would just hold the flat and not sign it until that comes.
Did they get annexed with the?
So just the north part, the five hundred feet, not the whole property, not the two parcels. The, the north five hundred feet of track one was annexed. So in essence, we are touching that one, and if we, when they sign that pre-annexation agreement, we can ask them to annex all of it, and they would have to, basically that agreement says that upon city request, they wouldn't fight it. But it doesn't mean that we will annex them.
And it won't change anything for them, really, X-wise, is it?
No.
So there's really no point in asking?
No, yeah, because right now, Tom, like, if the report is working on designating them, you know, all the Atlantic route there as a rural service district.
Yeah.
So basically, you know, the, the annexation agreement would just be, at some future point, we want both them parcels fully annexed, we feel the need for it as a city, then we can request it from them, and then they would have to annex, and that's part of our subdivision regulations. You know, we went through this before a few times.
Be interesting, you have seen, he gives the history on why it's Stockwell Track number one. That's, I'm sure, that's from way back. See that? Stockwell Track number one.
There was, there were Stockwells. There was, there were stockwells.
Um, it sounds like, I did ask the surveyor, cause Andersons have not contacted me at all, um, if, the reasoning behind it, I didn't know if this was kind of like Kansas, that they were, you know, cause there is a, you know, farmstead on the south side, if it was refinancing for Baytown or whatnot. And um, it sounded, he says, from what he understands, that um, the two brothers are splitting up the property, and so, that's why they're reploding it. I don't know who's getting what.
I don't.
I love the app.
Alright, so we're reviewing it right now, do you have a motion about anything here?
Well, yeah, so um, basically, our planning zoning board, which has approved a contingent, you know, that the comments are addressed, um, and has to be approved by the city council before it can move on to the county for them, so. It has to go through a city, if the city doesn't approve it or denies it, it doesn't, they can't replod it, they can't go to the county.
Motion to approve, apply a contingent on engineer comments. Alright, second.
Sorry.
Discussion?
I thought the engineer comments had been addressed.
Two of the three, then the second one, the pre-annexation agreement.
But, but that's not, that's not an engineer comment, though, that's just our.
It was one of the engineer comments. Yeah, it was number two on there.
It's part of your subdivision.
Yeah.
We're just in force.
I just wrote Theresa Blassett, this is the council to approve the black contingent on the engineer comments.
There you go, good point.
Alright, any other discussion? I think we should just wait until this time. Have a comment? Discussion on that item? Wait until this time? I think we just sit on it until this time?
The annexation agreement is usually something, if you don't mind. Can I speak now?
Absolutely.
The annexation agreement, well, they normally go back and forth, you know, there's usually some negotiating back and forth, and I think it actually, I agree that you should wait, uh, because make it come back. You know, they need to get their ducks in a row for it to be approved, in my opinion, so. I, I would agree that it should wait another council meeting.
I withdraw my motion. Alright, any other discussions, where are your other? Over to the table, till our next meeting. Second. Alright, any other discussion on the table? Hey, well, just table it till it's on. Can't have it all, just gonna able it till next meeting. We're gonna have it all. Wow. President? Jones?
Yes.
Nottingham? This on the table? Yeah.
Table to next meeting.
Yep. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes. Keel? Yes.
Alright. Signing agreement between the city airport and rural office community services. Make a motion to approve. Second. Discussion? Is that the only thing that changes is verbiage, Theresa?
Yep, basically, it's just assigning I-Caps rights to rocks now, since they manage the transit.
Alright. Alright, any other discussion? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Nottingham? Jones?
Yes.
And Brandon?
Yeah.
New lease agreement, West Side Boulevard number five.
Yes, I did add to the packet, um, Central States wanted to rent number five billboard, it's the, the west-based one, it's going eastbound. Um, I sent them their agreement there, legal department was looking over it, she contacted me Monday, said everything was good on their end, so she asked if it could get on the agenda so they can move forward with it. It's our standard three-year agreement, um, lighting from dusk till dawn, um, gotta put a deposit down, have insurance, no sublease, um, so it's our standard agreement.
Take motion and group, second. Discussion?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Alright, Sheldon reports partners, and looking for motion, go to executive session for legal. Second.
Motion.
Motion for air, second. John, see you in a bit. Alright, I want to take this out. Looking to adjourn? Second. Up the paper?
Hi.
And opposed?